Meeting is called to order.
Roll call for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, August 16th, 2017 at 7:30 PM. Mr. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Mr. President, I wish that we would remember those in our community that are less fortunate than we are in any and every way, both locally as well as globally. I also ask that we remember those who've lost loved ones since we were in these chambers the last time. Many individuals have lost loved ones. One in particular was a community servant, Mr. Rick Shanker, who was someone who got me very involved in my political career, believe it or not, many, many moons ago. So, remember his family and all those connected to that family as well. And finally, we ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the best information to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes from the City Council meeting of Wednesday, August 2nd, 2017, and bills for payment on August 11th and 18th, 2017. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kwiatowski.
Are there any citizens here for repository sales?
What? Say it again.
Look, I'd say, repeat this three times, so please be quiet, okay? Are there any citizens here for repository sales? Are there any citizens here for repository sales? Hearing none? Rose, we move on to the citizens to be heard.
Richard Wagner is first.
Okay.
Randy Barnes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Randy Barnes.
Yep, Randy, you're first.
Sorry, Randy, missed you there.
Just let me get my timer started here, please. Good evening, Council. Randy Barnes, 109 Walton Point, Erie, Pennsylvania. It's nice to see so many people here. It takes more than one meeting. You've got to be here maybe like this for the next year. The city has a problem, and we're taxing these citizens right out of their household. Since 2006, from 2006 to 2015, city property taxes increased 50 percent. Fifty percent, the property taxes increased from 2006 to 2015. That same period of time, school taxes increased 30 percent. Fifty percent and 30 percent tax increases on these citizens since 2006 to 2015. You know, these homes that need some repair didn't get this way since last year. We're expecting the same code enforcement group to take us somewhere that got us here, has ignored our problems for 20 years? It's been a lot of problems been ignored. You know, recently, we were all patting ourselves on the back a couple of weeks ago in here because we brought in $2.3 million in from the state. $2.3 million. And you know what you get for that $2.3 million? You get some drawings of what the Bayfront Highway could look like. You don't get any cement, you don't get any blacktop, you don't get any stoplights, you don't get any stop signs. For $2.3 million, you get some sketches. And before that, you spent $400,000, you let the state send $400,000 just to do the study to tell us that we want to have some sketches. $400,000 for the study and $2.3 million to get the sketches so we can decide what we want done on the Bayfront, because two to three hours a day, the Bayfront is backed up a little bit. Have you ever been to a big city? So, for $2.3 million, you could have bought 153,000 gallons of paint. For $400,000, you could have bought 26,000 gallons of paint. I think there's other people going to talk about this code enforcement issue tonight, but I want to talk about something else that you can do something about. I've seen the last couple of years, complete, some disrespect for the flag by celebrities, by professional athletes. A flag represents the rule of law. As the President said earlier tonight, that flag is the last piece of cloth every veteran wears. And I would like to see this council, you know, I'm back up for a minute, just this week, soldiers shed blood and died in a foreign country, so we can do this tonight. I would like to see the council draft a resolution supporting the act of standing during the Star Spangled Banner, recognizing, that's not mandatory, but standing, recognize those veterans have given their lives and their limbs and all the things that veterans go through. Support the flag. I think that's a resolution could easily be drafted, and I know you guys are real good at that here, there, and wherefore's, and how art thou, or whatever those resolutions go as. But I think that might maybe put Erie on the map for a few minutes. And again, it's a resolution saying that, you know, we respect the flag, we respect the veterans. It represents something. It represents why we can assemble here, why we have elected officials. Represents a lot of things. And I get really discouraged to think that these professional athletes and these personalities think that's the way to gather attention. Because as adults, that may not affect us as much, but there's a younger set of minds that look at that and think, I want to be like that person. I want to sit on the bench and eat a banana, making millions of dollars and not stand during the Star Spangled Banner. So, I encourage council to think about this resolution, supporting the act of respecting the flag and respecting what it means. And I'm going to cut myself short, and thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Richard Wagner, 42nd and State. And these are my opinions, so if they fly in the face of some things, it's just me talking. We have now entered the 140th month of this administration. Term limits will bring new faces to the Fifth Floor in just four months. In this time period, blight, poverty, and crime have all continued to increase while population, quality of life, and property values have been on a downward spiral. I asked myself why it took 128 months to recognize that the Department of Economic and Community Development needed different leadership. Mr. Mong was brought on board to help straighten out the mess. And then I asked myself why it took 122 months to enlist the help of Mr. Bukey to develop a long-term comprehensive plan only to have it redacted by the mayor and to completely ignore Mr. Bukey's biggest recommendation that to have this work, you will need the buy-in of the citizens of our great city. As of this date, City Council or the mayor's office has refused to seek participation by the citizenry. In the 140 months of this administration, I've heard two claims by the mayor and his staff. One, that we were spared Act 47 consequences and City Hall is more lean and an efficient group. I don't know what would have happened if we had suffered the consequences of Act 47, but looking back, I'm not sure that we are better off for avoiding it. And as far as being lean and efficient, there might be less people employed at City Hall, but the biggest change in manpower was brought about by the elimination of 9/11 call-takers. They weren't eliminated, they became a budget item of the county and instead of the responsibility of the city. We really do deserve better. The code enforcement sweeps that are taking place in the East and West Bayfront areas, where Ms. Franz heads up the group, have really overstretched the authority. We have a war room operated by the head of the County Planning Department. Who are they at war with? Homeowners? And why, in month 138 out of 144, did our mayor select 10 city employees to help move this comprehensive plan forward? There are only four months left in this mayor's administration. The next mayor, whoever it might be, should not be burdened with the ex-mayor's panel. Give the new mayor a chance. Let him pick the people to serve him. And on a side note, our mayor has recently made several long-term appointments to different boards and authorities. Let his replacement put people into these positions. It's time for Mr. Senate to move into the lame-deck portion of his term. Getting back to code enforcement and selected areas being targeted, code enforcement isn't supposed to be used as a weapon against the people, the very people that pay the taxes for its existence. It should be used as a tool to create a healthy, vibrant community. While this man is sweeping areas and looking at the outside of people's homes, he has no idea what's going on in the inside of these homes. How many people can't fix a broken window, because if they fix a broken window, they might not be able to buy food on their table or buy medicine to sustain their lives? No homeowner wants to let their most valuable asset fall into disrepair. But until we understand the situations in the East and West Bayfront that have led to property owners not being able to care for their property, you must cease and desist in this cruel and unusual practice. It will not create the climate to help our economic recovery move forward. You buy a home, you pay taxes, you maintain the home, and all we ask in return as homeowners is for the city to ensure that you can attain the quiet enjoyment of your biggest investment. Stop the insanity, talk to the citizens, and always remember, act in haste, repent in leisure. Thank you.
Mr. Grigorov?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm landlord, and my property is located 2217. And a couple of weeks ago, I tried to sell my property, and attorney found I have lien in my property. When I came to city, we founded 2004. I had some lady, my tenants, and I know her ex-boyfriend, ex-husband, anybody, and came to her, I don't know what reason, she called to police. Police came, destroyed my whole building for $37,000 damage. I came to Mr. Felipe, that mayor was Mr. Felipe, maybe 1000 times, maybe more. What he did, just he helped me $1,500, helped fix them. One and a half years, I can get tenant because put 57 tear gas, broke 57 windows, basement, first floor, second floor, H windows. And not just windows, windows was up, was summertime, screen was downstairs, what reason? Very smart police, and shooting through glass, not through and screen, and same time broke each windows, double windows, each one, 57 windows. Anyway, I helped myself, I remodeled it, I fixed it, one and a half years after start and give it to somebody else. At the same time, police came and we founded, and police charged me money for $166, what reason? I don't know. I didn't call to police, I didn't invite police to my property, destroyed my property $37,000. Now, nobody called me, nobody sent me to bill. And now we found $166, came to 412. This country, United States, built immigrant people. I came to this country in 1991 only for reason, for freedom, for justice, for fair. When I got this bill, I look around, very many, I'm still in Russia or I'm in United Our police, when you call police for help, we have to pay money? Somebody can be answered? When I came to city, and one day, city working, any, send it to me, courthouse, courthouse send it to me in city, six times, courthouse come back, courthouse come back, nobody give answer, nobody can help me. Only first, last position, you are guys. Now, you listen, you know what's happening, you can help me or not, I don't know. Thank you for listening, thank you for the patience.
Thank you, Mr. Grigorov. Okay, we're going to now open this up to those that didn't sign up. Just a little ground rules. Because of the size of the crowd, we hope you'll respect the time limit, and you'll also try to keep any interruptions down to a minimum because you're taking away time from the speakers. So, that's all we ask, and we will not, the council will not be addressing you, we're here to listen to you. So, there will be no back-and-forth dialogue. So, with that, please step up and...
My name is Fred Attiffer. I live at 1738 West 23rd Street in Erie. As you can see, I'm wearing a red shirt in support of the people. I am also concerned about code enforcement, but I have another matter I want to discuss first. For those of us who have been coming to you for several years about the East Street Viaduct, you have said, we have to believe what the administration says. We can only trust that the administration knows what they're doing. And I believe that we do have well-motivated employees in the city, however, they're not always right. And I want to use an agenda item today as an illustration of how that is true. If you will see, there is a resolution to accept an easement from Hammett Holdings in order to construct a parking, a sidewalk at 12th and Green Garden. Well, the reason that's happening is because when a variance was issued to allow that trucking company to become four businesses, and all the money that was spent by the owner to remodel, that should have triggered a review that would have allowed for the construction of a sidewalk as part of the issuance of a permit. That was overlooked, and John Tushak has admitted to me that that was overlooked. I have for two and a half years, and Councilmember Mersky and Brennan will know from all my emails that I have been pushing and pushing to get this sidewalk built. So, I am, I would like to praise Mr. Tushak and the landowner for acknowledging their error and finding a mutually beneficial way to enhance the safety in a very dangerous location where people are walking from get-go with no sidewalk on the other side. At least this will help that safety issue, and it will allow people who are trying to get from south of 12th to Bayfront Park or wherever they want to go safely. But the point is, the city missed something. They made a mistake, and it was brought to their attention, and they accepted that. And those of us who've been trying to get the city to reexamine the Viaduct project ask you to realize that the city and you can be making a mistake. Don't continue to make that mistake and destroy a vital link for the community. I will, I will also say that I have been saying for a long time that the city has an obligation to provide public involvement with the administration of the Erie Refocus Plan, just as Charles Bukey has said. And as people will tell you after I'm done speaking, there's a lot of abuses going on with the code enforcement, the most blatant of which as far as Erie Refocus is that they are going counter to what Erie Refocus said, and that the hammering of the low-income distressed district was not what Erie Refocus said. Erie Refocus said, use, use the code enforcement to protect the areas that have not yet deteriorated. But again, I urge the City Council members to realize that while we do have good employees, and they are willing to listen to public involvement and public concerns and correct an error, they do make errors. Thank you.
I guess we would get the people you normally see out of the way so you can get to the ones that are here on a rare occasion. Adam Trot, 531 West 6th Street. I wanted to address a couple of items. One is that we, with the Erie CPR group and the Viaduct issue that we're still advocating to save, we have no idea how much of the engineer's contract has been spent to date, and we don't know where to find that out. Whenever you talk to PennDOT about the Viaduct, they say they have nothing to do with it, it's a city project, but PennDOT's actually running it. So, there's a contradiction in just a general characterization of this project, which is confusing. But I wonder if anyone on council knows how much they've spent and whether council even approves when they cut these guys' checks. So, that's one thing I'm requesting. If City Council can find out for us how much they've spent so far. The other issue I wanted to touch on was the last time we were here speaking, that I was here, it was said by the administration that the study that we charge is extremely flawed. They said the study found that restoring the bridge for bikes and pedestrians only was not significantly different from the cost of restoring it for vehicles. Now, that is such a bald-faced misinformation, and it causes us to struggle with why would they say such an unnecessary false statement? From the very beginning, we charged that they never looked at that possibility. They only looked at replacing it with a pedestrian bridge or completely rebuilding it for vehicles. And the cheapest cost, they said, to pull that off was $7.2 million. That's right in the study. We even had a resolution that was sponsored and then died in the city solicitor's office that asked to go back and require the study to do this, no action alternative, which is a basic thing to do when you're doing these kinds of studies. But that resolution never got back out of the solicitor's office, and it's the solicitor's office which is promulgating a lot of this misinformation. I can tell you, I can quote directly from the city's response to the PUC denial of our request for an appeal of approval of this demolition project. When we said that the cost of 4.5 million was never told before, the city said, estimated cost of 4.5 million has been stated during the life of the Viaduct project. No one even knew of that number till we brought it up when we got the information from the PUC that the city applied for approval, saying it was a $4 million project, and the PUC came back and said 4.5 million. This is all at the end of just last year. And why you would make such an erroneous statement to say that this has been talked about the life of the Viaduct project, it's just baffling on why you'd go out of your way to be so misleading. Another one was, they said, the cost to repair for pedestrian only found not to be significantly different than usage for vehicles. That is a blatant misinformation. And why on earth would our administration make such a comment over and over? We've proven that that's not... You can ask them, show me in the study where they did. They can't. I don't understand why we are not getting truth out of this office. Another one, they're saying that the Viaduct route is an inferior route across the tracks from the Bayfront Parkway. Why, I challenge anybody, and we'd really love for all of you to walk the two, if you haven't yet, you really need to do it, and see what it's like when you're walking this narrow strip and a bike rider on the wreck trail needs to get past you. And God forbid, there's two bikes going in different directions. It's very tight, it's very cumbersome, you have nowhere to go for 2,000 feet to avoid a collision, and yet the Viaduct gives you over 28 feet of width, so that never happens. The continual misstatements that are unnecessary are just frankly frightening that we can't rely on truth and transparency from this administration. So, with you being the champions of the people, the only people in City Hall whose sole purpose is to champion the people's voice and interests, please, I ask you, look into these things, because once that bridge is gone, it will never come back. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Elena Getchel, 548 Hilltop Road. As you can see, I have brought here tonight the residents you represent. We are here because we are unhappy with the direction our action team and code enforcement has taken. I'm here to ask, why have we stopped following the Erie Refocus Plan? The answer to the code enforcement sweeps on the Lower East Side has seemingly been because of the Erie Refocus Plan. This, however, is not the case. On page 18 and 19 of the Erie Refocus Plan, Bukey does a wonderful job categorizing and illustrating for us each neighborhoods within the city. We start with the healthy neighborhoods such as Glenwood and Frontier, and then we work our way all the way down to our highly distressed neighborhoods, including the East Bayfront. Now, if you flip to page 50 of the Erie Refocus Plan, you can see that Bukey clearly states that code enforcement sweeps should take place in stable and transitional neighborhoods that abut these distressed areas. Nowhere does it say, please initiate code enforcement sweeps in the highest distressed neighborhoods in the entire city. Why is this happening? This is causing such undue hardship and panic, especially with the absolute lack of communication to the residents. I am requesting a moratorium from code enforcement sweeps and that a study session be held with myself and my group and members of Erie City. Thank you.
My name is Bob Ginnery. I live at 656 East 5th Street. I've been harassed by the code enforcement, 14 years I lived there. One example is that the pedelec cut down my trees in front of the house. They didn't take the bark from the tree, they left it there. He circled it, sent me a picture saying I had to have it removed. I'm not the one to put it there. Then the neighbors cut down a tree, and we share driveways. So, he comes over to me saying he's going to cite me for not removing that tree out of the driveway. It's in their driveway too, but they came to me and said they're going to cite me for it. Then I had, summertime, the wind was blowing the curtain out the window. He turned around, says, he sent me a picture with that, saying I had to have that fixed because the curtain was blown out the window. And this has been going on for 14 years. And now I get this saying that my gutters has to be done because the storm, I had, over the winter time, knocked the gutters down. And then chip paint. I'm on a fixed income, so I can't afford to do it all at once or anything. And that's all I have to say, and thank you.
Thanks for listening to people who come to City Council. I wrote this down...
Please give her a name, okay?
Sorry. My name is Stephanie Seiner. I live at 633 East 7th Street. And I've only lived there for two and a half months, but that is where I plan to live for a long time, or at least 30 years, until my mortgage is paid off. And I wrote this while I was sitting on my porch, trying to decide if I should come to this meeting about an hour ago. But I've been thinking about these things a lot and trying to be an engaged citizen, so I'm trying. But I am here because I wanted to ask you, as you're preparing for the final vote to rezone the nearly 12 acres of the Lower East Side, my concern is that the residents of the neighborhood and those of us who live just a block or two away have little input in the process and are unaware of how the rezoning will change our city and our neighborhood. And this is about the, I don't know if it's too late to talk about the Erie Insurance rezoning, but that's like the main theme amongst some of these other themes. And I read the daily newspaper, I go to the library, I read the Erie Reader, I try to know what's going on in Erie because I'm a new resident here. And I tried to find out the differences between medium-density residential and residential with limited business. And even with looking that up on the internet, I still feel like I don't know what will happen, what Erie Insurance is planning, especially in the long range and beyond adding the apartments and the commercial buildings. And so, I wish there was more time and energy used in making us the citizens aware of the changes and including our input in the decision-making before we find out that the decision is at its final vote. And this is something that kind of is in general, as well as with the rezoning, as other people are talking about. And so, as we look to the future of the East Bayfront, and there's the talk about development, revitalizing... revitalizing, changing things, improving things, and thinking about which of the entities have the resources and power to do that, I want to make my plea to the council to protect affordable housing, to protect homeowners who have low incomes, and small businesses from the displacement that often occurs with such efforts. And for all the negative things said about the part of town where we live, and I'm like a new person living here, I'm not speaking as a long-term resident, but every day I'm finding a lot of beauty and value in how my neighborhood is, in the people that I talk to, the interactions that we have. And there's really good things here now, not just in what it can be once it's changed or cleaned up or revitalized. And because of that, whatever comes our way in the future, I appreciate city council listening to the voices of the citizens and not just the corporations. And I want to reiterate that change, development, and revitalizing sounds good, but it's only truly a positive thing if it offers something to those who are already disadvantaged economically to begin with, and if those changes offer real respect and listening to the people who live in the neighborhood that is slated to change. And when families are forced elsewhere, businesses displaced, and when homeowners can't afford to stay in their homes, the cost of improvement is the lives and the livelihoods and the culture of the place lost to those who have already suffered a lot in our city. And that kind of reality makes it clear that hope and renewal was not actually for them in the first place. So I'm not trying to speak for other people or the other citizens of my neighborhood, I'm just speaking of my own concerns as a resident here and out of the stories that I've heard from people, even just in the past weeks and months of living in the Lower East Side. I live at 7th and Ash, and I know that things are going to change while I live in Erie. I realize that neighborhoods and things change, people move in, people move out. And I plan to live here a long time, but I know that could change. I just would like to have an idea of what's happening and what's about to happen, what's going to happen. If there are entities that have a long-range plan for where I live, I would like to be aware of that and be able to have my voice heard and speak about it and think about it and not just read about it or see it as it's happening and be upset. And that's why with the Erie Insurance rezoning, I would like to ask that there are public meetings about this before it comes to a final vote. If there were public meetings, I miss them, and I try to like not miss out on those things. And that's all that I wanted to say. I just have one final thing, which is, I lived in Philly for several years before I moved here, and I lived in a rowhouse, in a block of rowhouses, and across the street from me, there was another block of rowhouses that was slated to be rezoned from residential to commercial. And so the families all had to leave, they were evicted, they were, had to give up their home that they owned, and as the house was rezoned, the, or the place was rezoned...
Please wrap it up, we have a long crowd.
I'm sorry, okay. They tore down the houses, and nothing was built there, but as things went along, the property...
Ma'am.
Okay, I'm done.
We got a full house tonight, so...
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Feel free to call us if you have, you know...
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jeannie Brady, and I live at 1027 West 3rd Street. I've lived in Erie my whole life. I was raised to maintain the home. My husband and I do live in the West Bayfront area, and I am very glad that Erie wants to clean its city up of the blight. After the years of not enforcing the city code, I feel folks' physical and financial situations need to be considered. It's not like years ago where there were good-paying jobs and people had money to put back into their homes. Looking at our home, it is very apparent that we care for it and we maintain it. Walks are shoveled, lawn is mowed, and posies planted. I do the maintenance at our home, projects are completed in order of importance and as money is available. You need to take into consideration projects done not visible from the outside of the home. Our home was cited in February of this year for some missing spindles, porch steps, railing, and overhang that needed to be painted. One was to be done in 30 days, the other in 90. I am not blind, and I do have brains enough to know, in the city of Erie, you do not paint or do outside projects, February, March, April, or May. Now, may I ask why I have to live next door to a rental, the house to the west of me, fascia's been missing from this office, lattice under the front porch caved in on all sides, windows half of which don't open with tons of peeling paint, the porch is peeling, he's got so much stuff piled in front of his shed because he can't fit anything more in his shed, I have to live next door to that, and nothing is done to that person. Why is he exempt? I know that the blight in the city, there's so many dilapidated homes, this cosmetic painting or somebody's numbers that are missing is a minor. What needs to be taken care of are these homes that are falling down in the city. Thank you for listening.
Rose, can we get that address again? I'm sorry, we did not hear the exact address.
1027 West 3rd.
1027. The house adjacent to you is...
House 1027.
Is...
10 West.
Okay, 10, okay. Thank you.
Get back to us with the address, ma'am, okay? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bradford. I live at 1039 West 24th. So I wanted to come here today and discuss about the, some of how the refocus plan has been implemented. I also wanted to know that most of us are not here to stop Erie from moving forward, but we are here for is to make sure that our citizens, our taxpayers, are taken care of. During my time running for city council, I have met many people and many different groups. One of them was the Mental Health Association, the other one was the Martin Luther King Center. And the one thing that they kept saying to me was that the powers-to-be always come to the minorities and the disabled after they've already made their decisions. Well, I believe that's happening again. I believe that the plan was not thought out, we are not giving people access to resources, access to information, and access to hope. Not only did you start somewhat of a panic in the high-citation area, but what you also did is you weakened the trust that the people have for the city, for the council, and for the process. You know, this is something that we've all tried to build here for the past 10 years. Not one of the action team members has a communication background or a strong enough tech background to get the information out to the public. How do we expect a disabled man with no legs to fix his gutters? As well as find a way for City Hall to find the information that is posted somewhere on a billboard somewhere here? So what we're trying to say is that we stand here united before you to offer our help, to offer our skills, and to also protect the people in Erie who have no voice. Thank you.
My name is Connor Alessi, 19, 1021 West 30th Street. And I have quite a few concerns for quite a bit of properties that aren't taken care of that have, for example, West 23rd and Poplar, there is a house that is behind another house, and there may be a possibility of a bear living in there, and paws, raccoons, and a bunch of other things with a bunch of ivy growing on it, trees growing around it, and other stuff. Also, there's a property at 29th and Raspberry, which is a commercial property and a residential upstairs. The roof is caving in, there's a grease trap that's left there by biodiesel that's sitting there, rotting, collecting rust, and oil's just spilling all over the parking lot of that property. Poison ivy also growing in and around through the building. The sidewalk has multiple areas where people could trip and fall and possibly break a bone. Trees are dangling down because they're not properly maintained because they just sit there and nobody's taking care of it. The reason why nobody's purchasing it is because it's at a $1,200 rent level just for the downstairs. Also, there's a property that's been probably vacant for about a year now, that's on 31st Street, right behind my neighbor, and there is tall grass that is dead, growing, and there's poison ivy growing up a tree, and not only with these extreme heats and no rain, that these tall grass could potentially be a fire hazard and catch fire, but also there's poison ivy because when I was working in my neighbor's yard, pulling off Morning Glory off of her fence, there was poison ivy mixed in with it and didn't know it until I ended up in the hospital two days later with poison ivy and being treated for it, which is a big concern. And I've just seen multiple of these properties throughout Erie that are falling apart, and nothing's being done about them. We want to build more housing on the Bayfront and some more hotels, but yet we're not taking care of all these vacant houses that we have that we could be filling up with more citizens to bring to the city. And we could be doing a lot more with our Bayfront instead of adding hotels and housing, like we could use an aquarium, something that would attract more people in, you know, expanding the zoo and getting rid of that golf course. We have tons of golf courses throughout the county. We could expand that zoo and make it bigger. People are just coming from Cleveland, passing through, going to Buffalo, and going to the better zoos when our zoo is so small that they don't even want to stop to see it. We could be bringing in so much more revenue to the city if we have more things for people to do here. We have, I was up visiting one of my mom's friends up at a hotel that she works at, and when I was up there, I counted 11 hotels up by I-90. We do not need any more hotels. It is ridiculous that we are building more hotels when we have enough. We need more things to bring people into the city, not to house people. We've got plenty of housing. We've got a property between Cascade and Raspberry by the railroad tracks that's growing with nothing but trees just growing there. Nothing's being done about it. And then you've got those old factories that have broken glass panels and nothing's being revitalized. And the thing about our streets, too, is we have so many bad streets in Erie that need to be repaired. I was online looking, because I went to Central Tech, graduated in 2016, focused a lot of environmental science and whatnot, and one of the things I did research on was solar panel roadways. Not only does it benefit two things, on reducing cost on paving the roads, but it also provides free electricity for the citizens of that city that those road, solar roadways are built in. And it would save us a ton, a ton of money, not double-digit millions, but triple-digit millions of dollars that we could spend towards other things and revitalizing, making our city more eco-friendly. Our city has so many potential environmental hazards that we need to focus on, and this lake and bay is disgusting. I hate biking down there and seeing all this algae growing there and all this because of the old factory sites that used to dump things down there, and I see tires down there, and it looks like the rocks were replaced, and after those rocks were replaced, now literally a year later, there's tires and all kinds of stuff that are being dumped down there, and it's just ridiculous. Thank you.
My name is Dr. Margaret Wolf. I'm residing at 1360 West 9th, and I work at the Office of English Language and Global Training at Gannon University. I've also been a resident of Erie City for most of my adult life. In my work, I am blessed to be able to show my city to incoming residents and students. Working with the international population in Erie has given me a fresh eye on what I often miss as I drive down State Street. But it's also opened my eyes to what has deteriorated over the years, and my students have politely mentioned these changes. See, we've been blinded by the steady decline, and now, like the proverbial frog in boiling water, we desperately are trying to keep, to leap to safety. And I get that, because we've all been there, and I'm glad that these needs are starting to be addressed, but like that frog, we're not thinking calmly, we're panicking, and in that panic, we're missing some steps. See, many of my students have expressed interest in staying in Erie and calling it home. English is not their first language, it's their second or third and sometimes even fourth language. And I know we're also aware of the increasing refugee populations that are living among us, and many of them have planted roots and wish to do so and stay here as well. And this is wonderful news for us. But unless we address these issues, their issues, specifically language issues with these code enforcements, we are disenfranchising a large segment of our population. Add that to the number of residents whose first language is English, but they might struggle with reading competency or reading disabilities. Are we taking into account that not everyone understands or can even read these regulations, let alone adhere to them? Now, we might be in hot water, but we cannot leave our residents behind. So please consider adding additional languages to pay reforms and notices, as well as speaking to people in person, to help them to understand their rights as well as their responsibilities. Becoming a more inclusive community will help our new neighbors settle and establish roots in our city and contribute to the improvements that we all can enjoy. Thank you.
Gerard Pawwoski, 1253 West 9th Street. Our West Bayfront, the Bayfront belonging to the citizens of Erie, the people, not just a few large organizations or people with the means to fund pet nonprofits with a few million dollars. Today, I'm seeing a lot of red in here, and I think a lot of the citizens are seeing red. And they're seeing red about this code enforcement thing. Because what, why does the code exist? The code, the municipal code exists for the health and safety of all the people, and we're all human. Everybody in here is human. People who live far from the city presumably are also human. Why do we enforce code more strongly in one area than in others if everybody needs the same health, if everybody needs the same safety? And of course, the reason is in Erie Refocus. It's a tool, isn't it? But what's it a tool for? Is it a tool to, is it a tool that's being used to improve the lives of all the citizens? Or is it being used to line the pockets of a very wealthy few? When I see this code enforcement being used in certain areas, and when I see those certain areas being rezoned, being rezoned to a, to a type of zoning to, which is going to guarantee an increased value for that property of the people who own it, what am I supposed to What I believe we're seeing here is not something to improve the lives of all the citizens, but something comparable to what we've seen down in Cincinnati. A, a, a process to flip neighborhoods like you flip a house. Drive people out, aggregate the property, increase the value, sell it a profit. I drove down to Cincinnati, I walked around Over the Rhine, I walked around the neighborhoods by Over the Rhine, which haven't seen all of that, all of that fancy shining up that you see in the pictures. Oh, no. There's for-sale signs, but they're not the areas that they show when they want to sell property down there. You see, this development that occurs in places like that is not meant to help everybody. It's meant to help the few, the few who can buy a lot of property there, who can resell it for a profit. And it's not organic. And when I talked to the people down there who had been there for years, 10 years, business owners, citizens, that was their number-one complaint, that they didn't come there, they didn't seek input from the citizens, they didn't do things to help the people already there, to help the neighborhood grow organically. And we're seeing the same thing here. This plan, this Erie Refocus, it was created with the input of fewer people from the downtown than we're seeing here tonight. This plan was created for the benefit, probably of fewer people from the downtown than we're seeing here tonight. We need to refocus this plan to help the people, not the few who are going to profit from it. We need to refocus this plan around what's organically being fixed up, repaired, improved in the city, and to funnel the funds that are available toward those places, toward those projects, toward the people who are making a difference already, not just to the benefit of a few. Thank you.
Martha Wachuku, 320 West 8th Street. I'm going to reiterate a lot of what people have already said and are going to say tonight. I had the privilege of working as an organizer during the general presidential election campaign here in Erie on West 18th Street last year. And from then until now, now as a community organizer with Erie County United, I can tell you from experience from knocking on doors, talking to voters, non-voters, refugees, and Erie native alike, that people are tired of the systems that be, making decisions from the top down for all of us. Now more than ever, people want their lives to be considered during the decision-making processes. People are tired of being excluded and dismissed from this community's progress and gains. We have the unique opportunity here in Erie, as the city grows and revitalizes, to avoid the gentrification mistakes that other cities have made. have made. Rather than retroactively addressing the mistake of further segregating our city by racial and economic lines, we can proactively protect our citizens. We could do so by using a tool called community benefit agreements, where corporate entities with you, city council, and we, the people, make sure that there are agreements, such as preventing people from being displaced from their neighborhoods, that locals and people of color are highly considerate for hiring local construction and job opportunities, and that a portion of corporate earnings are shared back into our communities through schools and scholarships. Erie County United is working with a coalition of faith, community, and union leaders, as well as residents, to create proposals to work with community influencers like Erie Insurance, Scott Enterprises, and UPMC, as they expand into our neighborhoods. They are important community members and neighbors, and should help us promote a community with families sustaining wages, first-class schools, racially diverse neighborhoods, and economically diversed neighborhoods, as well as racially diverse workforces. All that being said, there are issues that need to be addressed now. At construction sites across the city, there's a lack of diversity. In these pictures, which I want to submit to council, you'll see that there's a lack of black people, there are a lack of Latino people, there are a lack of any other people of color from our diverse refugee populations, and there are a lack of women. This type of economic exclusion hurts our neighborhoods where a lack of opportunity feeds poverty, addiction, and crime. Now, on top of that, these same people are being targeted by code enforcement. People on fixed incomes who can't afford to upkeep their homes are now being slapped again with expensive fines. We need to be helping these people instead of fining them. We need to be helping them instead of pushing them out of the city's perimeters, effectively solving nothing. We can't expect the chaos that a state and federal government to help us and sustain the city in the future. That means that city government needs to consider, represent, and protect its people. So I implore you to listen and take the public seriously. I implore you to do some real community engagement. That includes being transparent and calling for transparency and efforts from big corporations like Erie Insur- Insurance with their rezoning efforts. So, again, things are changing, and people are playing, paying closer attention now after this last general election. So, I ask you, acknowledge these changes, adapt, and address them. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Gary Horton, 2046 East 19th Street. I'd like to raise two issues tonight. The first of one is regarding the recent, um, unlawfulness that is playing out in the state of Virginia. I'm hoping that you lend your voice and take some action as a council to represent that's not the kind of action that we like to see played out in our own community. I was here, I remember, when the KKK came to Erie. It has happened already. I remember when Mario Bagnone fought and promoted a resolution to make the Klan take their hoods off. If they want to march in Erie, you can march, but you have to take the hood off. Now they're picking up weapons. I remember when they came here in the council chambers and ringed the council chambers with guns. I remember that. I also remember now they have permission to carry guns in the park and public areas. I think the city, this city, should be aware and take those things in consideration, and make sure that you are taking the kind of actions and making the kind of statements that ensure all of our citizens that you have our safety in mind. The second thing I'd like to do is, the 1990 census produced the 1992 children in poverty, where children in Erie ranked first in the nation, minority kids, first in the nation, Latino and African-American kids living in poverty. Twenty-five years of broken promises and missed opportunities to address it, now we have the children and grandchildren of the children in poverty, living out antisocial behavior in our neighborhoods, from gun violence to drugs, poor health, schooled, uh, under, dropouts, drugs, homelessness, all of these things that could have been predicted. Disproportionately employed minorities by the state and local government, by county and city and school district. It's parallels an uptick in the explosion in crime and antisocial behavior in our community. Community benefit agreements provide an opportunity. If the current projects cannot be seen as a part of a solution, then we're missing the picture. They're a part of a solution to a much larger challenge that we face, how to give young people hope, able-bodied, young workers of a, an opportunity in the growth and development underway in our community today. Yes, we have this Fortune 500 company whom we are blessed to have headquartered here in Erie, Pennsylvania, and they do a lot. No one can match them, and they can readily show others the way to inspire and lift the aspirations of our inner-city youth by providing them opportunities and training for a career or a job in the building or construction industry. If Gannon and Mercyhurst and the Federal Courthouse and EMTA, the current road and highway projects, the VA Hospital, UPMC Hammock, St. Vincent's Allegheny Health Systems, Scott Enterprises Harbor Place, the Port Authority, the Water Authority, the Sewer and Parking Authority, and the Redevelopment Authority. If we can't see hope and opportunity in the growth and development that's playing out with them, how, that's why the kids are leaving or doing what they're doing. If we come here at budget time, you say we don't have any money. If we come here at community development block grant time, you say we have no money. Community benefit agreements are an opportunity to leverage the goodwill of the people who are investing in our community to pay for things like code enforcement, not just for the people, the guy who's enforcing it, but create, uh, resources that benefit the people, and then do some of the things, the challenges that people come here and ask you to do. Community benefit agreements are an opportunity to do that. They do them in LA. They do them in Pittsburgh. The, the Penguins gave the community-based organizations in Pittsburgh $6 million. $6 million that the government didn't have to give them, and that to, to address the challenges of inner-city. And uh, if they can, if they can be effective in New Jersey and Philadelphia and, and all of those places, they can certainly be effective here in Erie. And I hope that you use that as an opportunity to give hope and opportunity to those that are looking for, from, from kids to senior citizens and homeowners. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carrie Tab. I live at 951 West 5th Street, and like everybody, most people here, I'm here to talk about code enforcement. Um, one of the things, I, I've owned my home less than a, just over a year, excuse me. Um, and when I first moved in, right across the street from my home, there was multiple rental units. Every time a tenant would move out or be evicted, they would leave refrigerators, couches, chairs on the property. Multiple times, I called down to code enforcement, spoke to Donna Carson, almost to the point where she would hang up on me and told me to find something else better to do with my time than to nitpick on her. To the point that, finally, I go up the chain because there was a homeless man sleeping on one of the couches in between the homes. I have young children. There's a lot of young children in that neighborhood. Finally, they did something about it. Now, all these citations are coming out. When I purchased my home, it was dilapidated. I bought it because I knew I could purchase it at a price that I could afford and be able to revitalize it. In the year that I'd been there, I put in a new roof, put in a new porch, I put in new siding, and I'm working on putting in a driveway. One of the things I was cited for was a bagster from Lowe's that I was putting the materials that I was using to upgrade my home for. That is on my citation, that I had 30 days to remove that. The other thing that I was cited for was chipping paint on my railings, and I don't remember the name of it, but it's the white decorative paint that goes around the border of your home. I have cracks in it, and there's one portion that's missing because we've been trying to tear up the driveway. I, to me, I'm, take the time to look at the old, what my home looked like before. Come and talk to me. Ask me what I'm doing. Ask me how I'm improving my home. Like I said, if you go to the county website and look at what my home looked like, and look at what it looks like now, I've invested thousands of dollars into my home. I'm doing the best I can, as fast as I can. I'm not rich. So, I would just appreciate it if they would talk to us before they cite us. Don't threaten us. Talk to us. Thank you.
Hello. Kevin Postefka, 722 East Grandview on the city side. Uh, I've been doing a lot of work with some of these groups, uh, in the city, and, uh, I just wanted to echo a sentiment, uh, that is coming out of here tonight. Uh, first off, on the viaduct. Um, you know, I see a lot of reasons, particularly the, the safety of schoolchildren, uh, to keep that viaduct in place and ma- and, and, and maintained. And I, I don't see, uh, I don't hear, uh, the argument to take it down. So, I mean, I, I'm not seeing the logic at all on the destruction of the viaduct, whereas, uh, you know, I, I've walked that path. I've seen that area. It's a dangerous intersection. It's a dangerous area. And, and it seems that there's a viable solution right there in place. So, I would want to lend my voice on behalf of the CPR group that is trying to, uh, keep that viaduct intact. Uh, secondly, uh, I didn't come here at all to talk about code enforcement, but obviously a lot, a lot of people have, uh, but kind of as a transition on that topic, um, I am interested in, in the concept of the community benefit agreement that some of the other people have spoken of here. I mean, um, uh, you know, I, I don't have the details of the, uh, of the tax revision for Erie Insurance. And I'm not sure what all the dimensions of the deal are. Uh, but the notion of, uh, you know, giving tax breaks to corporations, uh, has never really been something that appealed to me, and especially when you can juxtapose it with the idea of a, a community benefit agreement where you have, uh, corporations and local government and local citizens discussing ways that their project can benefit the whole community, uh, you know, in, in this case, in terms of, um, uh, hiring people in that community where the construction is going to be done, uh, hiring, uh, percentages of minority workers who also are from that community, creating, uh, scholarships, uh, from the profits that, uh, the corporation's going to make, and, and, and allocating them to residents of the community and to the local colleges, you know, so we can, uh, develop the kind of professionalism that could lead to employment in the, in those corporations. So, you know, here we have a situation that, uh, you know, I think if I was sitting on, on your side of the desk, I'd be advocating strongly for, because to fight for a community benefit agreement is to fight for the people of the city. So, uh, uh, you know, the idea is out there, and, uh, I'm, I'm just here to, you know, try to give it an endorsement, uh, to the extent that I can. And, and thirdly, uh, of, no, I don't know, about a month ago, I was here, and there was a group of people advocating for the decriminalization of marijuana, and, uh, I just want to keep that idea on the table to the extent that I can, and, uh, hopefully something comes out of that, uh, in the near future. Thank you.
Council? I'm Lisa Austin, 1262 West 9th. Thank you very much for your service to the city. I really appreciate it. I'm here to talk about a couple of things. I want to start with Erie Insurance. We're all very grateful that they're here. They employ, uh, a lot of people in the city and the county, and, um, they're an important organization. But they should not be given free, uh, an opportunity to redevelop a, a key portion of the city without community engagement and without a community benefits agreement. So, it's really a problem that, that this is on the, uh, there's planning going on to support that. They need to be, they cannot be just given, I don't think that they should be given the opportunity to do it. I'm not saying I, I suspect them of anything, but it's just, it's inappropriate to give that much power to an organization. Secondly, uh, the whole issue with code enforcement. There's nothing wrong. Code enforcement is very, very important, but the way in which it's been handled has, is, is, is a perfect example of how not to do code enforcement. And somebody who, you know, you might be suspicious and think that, you know, there's an, almost an undermining of the Boogie Plan here, here's a way to make people really fight the Boogie Plan by, by unrolling this code enforcement, which is frightening people. Um, all of this reminds me of the issues I've observed over the past few years and been here to talk to you about them, including the decision to close Division Street, having children living in low-income areas walk all the way around to Parade Street to get to Piper Burley, uh, removing the buses off of State Street, making people go over to French and Peach to connect the buses, uh, and also, of course, the plans to demolish the viaduct. What I see, it, that's consistency here, is that there has not been, um, community engagement in a lot of these issues and transparency, for sure. But the biggest thing, I think, is that we have not had a city planner. I think we have many, many people who really work hard in the city, who mean well, but they don't have the skill sets that are necessary to help us make the right decisions. Uh, I always think about how engineers are really fantastic at solving very specific problems that you give them, but they are not qualified or able to think holistically as a city planner does. And that's really what we need. We've been needing that. We've been talking about it for years. The, um, I wanted to also quote Jane Jacobs, one of my favorite writers. She wrote that cities have the capability of providing something for everybody only when they are created by everybody. We need to have community engagement. And I want to end by just saying, we have the Erie Refocus Plan. I'm not saying it's perfect, but it's pretty, it has some really good things in there, and we should really honor it. And tonight, there's been many, uh, instances outlining in the ways in which we're not paying attention to it. We need community engagement. We also need community benefits, and we really need a city planner. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Veronica Rexford. I live at 4124 Restroge Road. I'm a county resident who works in the city, but as the city goes, so goes the county. I'd like to thank the vast majority of you who are on the stage this evening, who are maintaining a respectful demeanor to all of the speakers who are in the room tonight. Erie region's at a crossroads. You know about the hundreds of millions of dollars of development. I'm going to just reiterate very quickly. You all are at a, a point where you're setting a precedent. How you handle development downtown has long-term and broad ramifications. The way you approve or otherwise process requests sends a signal to both the developers and the community. While this Erie Insurance development may very well be lovely, and a foregone conclusion as well, the process you use sets a precedent for approval of projects that have not been fully articulated. The residents of surrounding communities in the county are investors in every project currently under development, and those soon coming down the road, one way or another, whether through tax concessions, state grants, or by virtue of converting property from tax-paying parcels to tax-exempt property. The citizen investors deserve a seat at the table, and I will reiterate that community benefit agreements are a vehicle for doing that. A community benefit agreement, for those who are not aware of what they are, it's a project-specific agreement between a developer and a broad community coalition that details the project's contribution to the community's needs. And I would like to end with this. I am the chair of Citizens Against Racism of Erie, which was developed, as mentioned previously, when Klan had a rally in Perry Square 25 years ago. I would like to reiterate that a statement from council sets a tone in the community that that is not what we are about. Thank you.
Evening, everyone. Kate Haley, 1146 West 23rd. So, tonight, we've been hearing a lot about the code enforcement sweeps and its effects on low-income neighborhoods, how attaching community benefit agreements to local development can create family-sustaining and long-term jobs, and perhaps be a vehicle to help our neighbors fix their code violations. I would add that decriminalizing marijuana possession I would add that decriminalizing marijuana possession is also imperative to the overall well-being of our city. Those three things all tie into addressing hopelessness, workforce inclusion, poverty, and strengthening our community. I've knocked many doors in the areas surrounding the Erie Insurance Development and, you know, the Bayfront area where Scott's planned to do the Harbor Place development. A lot of the neighbors in those areas around the development are telling us that they feel helpless. What can they do? They're just an individual. No one cares about me. I'm a nobody. But I believe that if counsel can assist us in moving forward on CBA's decriminalization and the code enforcement issue, that that apathy, I think a lot of people are feeling, will dissipate and people will become more civically engaged. I implore every one of you to mull all three of those issues thoroughly and in turn, come to an understanding that Erie will rise again, but only if we do it from the bottom up and not from the top down. Thank you.
Cindy Purvis, 101 West 34th Street. First, as always, thank you so much for your service. I come again with the McBride Viaduct. I have invitations for all of you sent by Nia Darby, who's on our committee. We're going to have a walk and we invite all of you and all of you to walk to actually see for yourselves how dangerous the Bayfront Connector is for people to walk. It's almost impossible, especially in the wintertime, and the connector is cut off by an exit right off the Bayfront. And you've all been children. And as children and teenagers, you know, you're not going to walk up a hill and cross at a crossing, proper crossing, and walk down the hill to continue on your way. You didn't do it then. A lot of people aren't going to do it now. It's very dangerous, extremely dangerous. It was not designed for pedestrians to use. And when you take away the viaduct, then you've taken away a safe place for pedestrians. So, I encourage all of you to show up at the walk and see for yourselves. Don't take my word for it. Don't take our word for it. See for yourselves. Walk the walk and you'll see how dangerous this is for our citizens. Thank you.
Cindy, did you give a time and date?
It's Saturday, September 9th, 1:00. It's right now, we have the meeting.
Good evening. My name is Gary Kanachik. I live at 226 Seminole Drive, which of course, the west side. A long-term Erieite. I was born at 20th and Wayne. I live in 11th and Parade. I lived at 15th and Ash. I lived on Bird Drive and now I'm on the west side. So, I, you know, have a little bit of vision of what Erie's about, I think. And I have to say, when I first heard about the program, I said, crap. That's great. You know, you got the inspection program. I'm a landlord. No, I'm not a slumlord. I'm a landlord. And now we have another program. I didn't think it was a great idea. I liked it less when I got my letters. But Erin was completely professional, completely tactful, completely fair. And I think where the city really blew it is a failure to communicate. See, a lot of people in the room that are professional communicators. I don't think it was communicated well. I was at an MLK meeting and some of the elderly folks really believed this program was a means to take their house. You know, you need to be communicated better. But to get back on task, I'm completely in favor of this program. The physical condition of Erie's housing must improve. We must stay on course with the inspection program. I realize change is difficult and change is costly and even painful. The good news is the change is positive as heck. Drive through West Erie during the day. What you'll see is contractors replacing unsafe sidewalks. Roofs are being repaired and replaced. There are more building repairs and painting being done in northwest Erie than in the prior couple decades. Walkable, safe neighborhoods are part of the success of this program. Our west Bayfront is building a constituency and is doing a great job, forming tactical plans and becoming impactful. It will take time. There's pain in change. I do have another thing I'd like you to look at and all members of council and everybody in the audience. Northwest Erie needs your help. And that is my focus. That's what I know something about. The drug bars must go. There are cancer that prevents residents from feeling safe. There are cancer that prevent people from wanting to live in northwest Erie. In April, someone was shot to death in one of those, what I call, drug bars. Who wants to live near a drug bar? Who wants to invest in housing? You'll see housing stay on the market for a long time around these drug bars and I'm not going to name the addresses. You know who they are. Or you certainly can figure out, talk to the police or Detective Division. I know nuisance bar legal status is difficult. There are many ways to remove the cancerous drug bars from northwest Erie. If we work together, the significant progress that has occurred can accelerate and northwest Erie can be the role model of success as a safe, walkable neighborhood. Thank you.
My name's Anthony Buffalieri, Summit Township resident. I guess I want to start with, I have 21 properties in the city of Erie, from Brown Avenue area up through Elmwood, 34th and Elmwood, over to 29th and Chestnut and down to 24th and Chestnut-St. Vincent area. And I started 20 years ago doing this and put a lot of time and a lot of money and a lot of effort into keeping up my properties and making them better. And I started as an investment, you know, to make money, you know, to make some money on it and stuff like that. And then I realized the value and the satisfaction in making someone a nice place to live, you know, seeing them enjoy their place. And, you know, quickly after I bought my first place in 1997 in May, you know, it was a 100-year-old property. It was exactly 100 years old at that time. And, you know, being 100 years old, obviously, it needed work. And I was quickly introduced to code enforcement, you know, like out of the blue. I'm like, what the heck is this, you know? And, you know, I realized that, you know, the properties needed work and stuff like that. And over 20 years, I've been dealing with code enforcement and I have plenty of reason to, you know, to really complain and I want to say bitch up a storm about them. But I've also learned over 20 years, you know, I'm not here to complain about them, but I've also found that they're very patient, they're very understanding. I know them all by name. I have all their phone numbers, their cell phone numbers in my phone. But I also found that if you do their job, they're just doing, you know, they're doing their job to make you do your job. And, you know, I have every reason to complain about them, but I'm taking a different stand because the city's in decline. And when you have 100-year-old buildings that are getting older, 120, some of mine are 160 years old this year. And, you know, you need an aggressive code enforcement because, you know, the buildings pay the bills. I mean, without your housing stock, you know, you don't have any income from taxation. And, you know, the city's in competition with brand-new buildings going up in Summit, in Mill Creek. You know, you've got 100-year-old buildings competing with brand-new buildings in Summit and Mill Creek. Palermo's paving as much as he can of the suburbs, putting up brick and mortar everywhere. You know, and there's different ways, you know, I'm in the inner city every day and, you know, and I observe closely the decline and, you know, the different, I don't want to say different people that were in the city, but it seems that there's not as much homeownership and there's more people renting because, you know, the jobs aren't here that, like they used to be. So, people, more people are forced to rent or they have to keep waiting to buy a house. So, I mean, there's not as much investment in the neighborhoods, maybe because the companies that pay the bills aren't here anymore. Bussiris, GE, you know, Amsco, all those places are gone. That's what built the city. But there's things that the council and the administration can do to maybe slow the decline and maybe reverse the decline. One way I would think, I don't know what the summer jobs program does. I don't know where that money goes or whatever, but maybe some of that money could go to partnering with landlords to help them keep up their places. I would, you know, I've been doing it for 20 years and I'm getting to the point where I went mine, hiring someone, investing in the city and also giving a kid a job for the summer. Maybe if some of that money from the summer job programs, if you got an allotment and you gave half the money, I would pay half the wage or whatever, just to put a kid to work and get some, you know, get some more work done. Another way maybe to be partnering with the Times News and to feature different houses that guys are working on or women or whatever and feature that and the accomplishments that they made in the city, you know, and maybe applaud them for that. Another way is maybe go after the taxes on properties. I mean, I don't know, that's more of a state-level issue. But, I mean, you know, I don't want to pick on churches or anything, but I mean, if you occupy a certain plot of land in the city that benefits a select group of people and they're requiring city services, they should have to pay a part of their tax roll. Who are they going to call if they have a fire or a crime? They're going to call, you know, they're going to call the city police, you know. So, they should pay for that, man. The house, the church up on 38th and Allegheny, I mean, that's a huge, a huge plot of land. How much land can a church take up and still remain tax-exempt? The other thing is blight. There shouldn't be any reward for slumlords. I mean, you can't let your property sit and go, you know, go to hell and then walk away from it. And after eventually it goes so bad, you just walk away from it. That property comes down and it's off the tax rolls and all the rest of us taxpayers have to pick up that tab. The other thing, places like Knights of St. John, they took down a building for a parking lot. One Way Inn took down a building for a parking lot. I mean, that should stay on the tax roll. I mean, you really, what I'm getting to is you really should get off the improvement-based tax system. I mean, if you let your house go to hell or whatever, then, I mean, if it has to come down, then you should pay the same amount of tax on it. You know, I mean, because there's not really any investment. I mean, that worked for a good amount of years where you would get more improvement, more taxes if your improvement went up. It's kind of the reverse right now and people are taking down buildings left and right. I mean, whatever, you know, whatever building Erie is moving out, I mean, the companies are moving out and then you have other companies building campuses, taking down buildings. We're slowly losing our tax base. And one other thing, I just want to applaud the efforts of Erie Refocus and the mayor and administration in code enforcement. And, you know, if I have 20 buildings and I'm ready to step up to the challenge of whatever paperwork they send me and I'll keep responding to their calls, and if I can take care of 20 properties, there's no reason that anybody else can't take care of one.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
My name's John Steph, 911 Washington Place. I'm not too involved in what's been going on, but I have to tell you, I have serious reservations about what I've heard about Erie Refocused. I am not so sure that we can compensate for the number of jobs that Erie has lost in the past 20 years. These are grassroots, like sterilizer, snap tight, of course, hammer mill, now GE. And there's going to be, there's a cascade effect, as we all know, with GE. It's going to be probably in the several thousands of jobs that we're going to lose. And I have to say, I lived in Manhattan for 25 years and I think I can spot a real estate speculation when I see one. And this, there are aspects of this program that seem to me to benefit several institutions in this city and several groups of people and not necessarily considering the welfare of the city. And if this involves buying up poorer neighborhoods and then installing new buildings and then depending on the middle class who has been cited by inspectors to sort of have a Potomkin kind of village so that the valuable properties that have been built are desirable, then we have to think again. And the point I wanted to make was, I still remember the Erie Redevelopment Authority back in 1965 and thereafter. And at that point, 11th Street was pretty well demolished to about Liberty Street. Small businesses, condominiums, houses were destroyed. And no provision was made for the residents of those communities to find easy housing. Furthermore, 10th Street, 500 block, 600 block, were mutilated by fake modern buildings replacing basically shingle-style houses. And if somebody drives down 10th Street, I mean, it's like an embarrassment. And I think that if we start displacing people as we did with Erie Redevelopment Authority in the '60s, you're going to find people that don't have houses. And what happened in the '60s was people moved around, people, there was rioting in the schools, as I recall, and people left town. And I think we need to hear more guarantees about what's going to happen with these property machinations. I guess that's all I have to say.
Hello, honored council people. Art Leopold, 5341 Apple Grove Lane, Erie, PA. There was a lot to like this evening. I'm pleased that I was able to stay for the whole thing this evening. Community benefit agreements are just a good idea. And if we can start it with the developments downtown here, then that will begin to carry through on all the other developments that we move through. The code enforcement, to take a relook at that, I think that's an excellent idea. Sounds like there's a lot of people getting burnt and I think it's something that we need to do. The support of the viaduct, that's been longstanding. I don't think it's a done deal. I think you need to have a voice in that. As you know, I want to bring to top of mind the decriminalization of marijuana in order to help reverse mass incarceration. I want to bring it top of mind. I want you to give it a serious look. I've given you ordinances to follow. I've given you information that York, Pennsylvania, was the fifth city in Pennsylvania to prove this. We can be number six. We should be. It will save people's lives. There are young people, people with minor infractions of marijuana. Just reduce that criminality down so that it's a fine, so they don't have a stain on their record. Really why I'm here this evening is to bring back to mind the recent tragedy in Charlottesville, Virginia. It was 25 years ago this year that the KKK marched in Erie. 25 years ago, the Citizens Against Racism in Erie was formed to help bring about diversity and unity in this community. And I want you to seriously give consideration about a resolution to voice your concerns and to oppose hate and bigotry in all forms. I think it's necessary. I also want you to understand that there are things that can be done in this town that will be very helpful. And one of them is not having the KKK come to town again and want to march. You should be prepared for that request. They have said that they're going to revisit and have many more marches across the country. And so, it's something that you ought to think about. I want to bring to light something that happened last night that's wonderful. We have a new Jewish synagogue in town and I was honored to go to the roof-raising ceremony. I want to let you know, it's a glorious thing to have a bright light in the community like that and we're honored to have that happen. So, please give these things consideration. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, City Council Administration. My name's John Whaley. I live at 447 Gordon Lane. And I wholeheartedly appreciate you guys listening, everybody who was here tonight. This is a long night. Everybody stayed. Appreciate that. I'm not top of my game at a surgery on Monday, so forgive me if I go a little slow. But I'm here to talk about the blight and the Boogie Plan, et cetera. And I was asked to wear red. I chose to wear blue because I've talked until I'm blue in the face. That's going to be my statement. I was here 2016 when council adopted the Boogie Plan, raced it through. And I asked, what is the plan? What are we going to do? How are we going to fund it? Who's involved? And we never really got those answers and, you know, Charles Boogie was reapproached and, you know, he said, "Don't do stupid shit." Excuse my French. He said, "Have public input meetings. Get information out," et cetera. He implored us to do that. Once you approved it, I think it's been turned over to the administration. But you owned it. You turned it into a law or a something. You approved it. You did some major work to approve it. So, we have this thing that's really a book report. It's not a plan and you can pick and choose from it. If it was a plan, they'd know the marching orders. But they're reading it and deciding, you know, I know it says to do the areas next to the worst, but we're not going to do that. We're going to do the worst. And we're going to do this and we're going to do that. And I think that, as many other people have said, it's done terribly wrong. The information hasn't been disseminated. Now, there's a big festival happening downtown Erie called Celebrate Erie and it's right outside the doors. And there's a beautiful brochure with all kinds of dates and information, maps. Dozens and dozens of local companies have been contacted to participate, to give their money and time. Where's the refocus brochure? Where are the meetings? Where are the dozens and dozens of companies that have stepped up and said, "Hey, we're ready to do this. We want to help. We want Erie to be better." We can put on a four-day event with washed-up '70s bands and do all this and we can't do Boogie right? Shame on that. One of the things that no one's talked about, and I'm shocked, final passage tonight, $10 million in bonds. City of Erie is 150 million long-term debt right now. City of Erie is $150 million long-term debt right now. We're going to add $10 million to it. Local bank's going to get the bond, they're happy. It doesn't say what we're going to use the money for. A bond would be a capital issue. That's what it says in the state laws. So you must be building a building or doing something that's going to have a life longer than these bonds. And I'm going to prognosticate, it's a big word for you, I'm going to say, "We're going to buy cop cars next year and we're going to pave streets. We're going to bank this money just like you did in 2013 and you're going to pave streets." So the 2017 bonds that are $10 million are going to cost us $23 million. And in 2047, we're going to pay them off. But I have another prediction. In 2046, whoever's sitting up there is going to say, "You know what? Let's roll these over. Let's save some money. Let's not finish these up, just like you guys did last year. You took $50 million in long-term debt, some of it from 1998 that was about to be retired and you refinanced it." So my children, if they're lucky enough to find a job in Erie and stay here, they can pay that off in 28 years. Now, I'm going to go off here. Aaron Snippert, I vote him employee of the decade. This guy came from Redevelopment Authority and apparently is lighting the world on fire. Right or wrong, good or bad, this guy's doing his job. Someone hired him and said, "Go write some citations, find us some blight." He's making everybody look stupid. He's making the other five code enforcement people look like they're asleep at their desks listening to Bible verses every morning. He is doing his job. Let's find some more Aaron Snipperts. Let's get rid of the non-Aaron Snipperts who aren't doing their job. If this guy can find 1,500 citations, where were the other five code people for the last decade? Did these just happen? Did that paint just pop and peel instantly? No, people aren't doing their jobs. Blah, blah, blah. Oh, Millionaires Row, right on 6th Street, right in the downtown of Erie, pride of Erie. There's a page called Preservation Erie and they talk about the old days and all these beautiful homes and it was Millionaires Row. And there's a guy that has this Facebook page and he puts beautiful pictures up and every single time I comment, "Look, Erie was busier in 1910 than it is now. There were more people, more homes, more industry, more everything." Look at a picture of Manhattan in 1910. Not better than today. Look at a picture of Cleveland in 1910. Not better than today. Erie's best days are behind us and we are managing the decline and we're watching it go. I'm going to hand some pictures to you. Here's a blade in Crawford Young, like Indiana University, with flowers growing on the roof and paint peeling. Someone's trying.
All right, please let the speaker speak.
Hi, my name is Sharon L. Dunphy. I live at 516 East 28th Street. I used to live at 116 East 4th Street for eight years between French and Holland. I moved on July 30th after being there for eight years. The blatant disregard that Erie Insurance has for the human beings that live down there is abysmal. When they took over Pufferbellies, I guess they were allowed to rezone for that. When they took over Pufferbellies for months on end, we heard a high-pitched, loud drilling like it was coming over a loudspeaker, like from a dentist's office. They cleaned around every single brick on that building. And then they were constructing the new restaurant, or the new kitchen, rather, I'm sorry, on Sundays. It didn't end. It was 24/7. Well, I lived there 24/7, but the construction even went on on Sundays. I called Mike, the project manager for Pufferbellies, and he said, "Oh, I didn't know they were working on Sundays." Duh, he was the project manager. Six weeks before I moved, it was a Sunday morning at 8:00. There was extremely loud wood chipping. I flew out my door, went across into the parking lot of Erie Insurance, and it was Andy's tree service. And I marched up to him and I said, "Who asked you to do this at 8:00 in the morning on a Sunday while Father Kriegel is having his first service at the Roman Catholic Church? Plus, you woke me up." I said, "Who asked you to do this?" "Oh, Erie Insurance." Whereupon I left Mike another message. This time, he did not return my call and I was a little bit louder than the tree chipper. I will have to say that I was down there for eight years. Eight years at 116 East 4th. I moved on July 30th. I miss my friends down there. I miss walking up to the fountain in Perry Square plain in the water. I went out to have a cigarette while I was waiting to come up. I looked over at the fountain and it hurt too bad to look at it. I asked Mike, I said, "Could you people please have a modicum of respect for the human beings that do live down there 24/7?" So I'm wondering, if they're not able to do that, could City Council please pass an ordinance requiring, like LECOM, UPMC, Erie Insurance, they are corporatizing our city. They are taking away our identity. It's not Jerry Up Park anymore, it's UPMC Park. What are they going to do? Rename Lake Erie, Lake LECOM? I'm serious. I mean, you know, I'm heartbroken, in part. Yeah, I moved. I felt like I threw in the towel, but my sanity was at stake. No place and nothing is worth my mental health. And so, yes, I moved, but guess what? I'm down here. I still care. I still care so deeply, I couldn't even look at that fountain when I went out and had a cigarette. So if Erie Insurance has a blatant disregard for the human beings that live on the periphery of where they're doing all this construction, I want to know, how are they going to be able to be open to community-based agreements? So I'm asking, please, for council to pass an ordinance requiring them to do so. And just by the way, I think the stairwell they put up in Pufferbellies, it's a steel stairway. It looks like crap.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Good evening. My name is John Crane. I was a resident of the city. I currently reside in Mill Creek. I am the director of the nonprofit organization, Misswood Community Outreach and Youth Program. We just recently launched an anti-addiction support program for the city. We run outreach programs for the Erie School District. We run anti-homelessness programs for anyone and everyone. Anyone that needs resources in this town, we help them with. A lot of you guys know the work that we do. What you don't know is the other side. The individuals that are impacted by the code enforcement are the individuals that we work with. And you see all of the good and you hear all of the good, but not the bad side. The things that everyone's talking about tonight, this is not an exercise in just relative theory. These are people's lives who we're talking about, that I hear from 24/7. We need hope in this city, more than anything. We need hope. And every single day, I give that hope to people when they contact me. Person by person, the individuals that I work with, we provide that hope. The problem is, when they receive a citation, they receive anything, they are so incredibly disenfranchised from the entire system that they say, "I've got two choices, John. Number one, I can decide if I want to pick my medication, if I want to pick food, if I want to pick school clothes for my kids, or if I want to get school supplies for them, or if I want to try and save up to support whatever it is that is going wrong with my property." And it's extremely disappointing. You know, but I'm an optimistic realist, to be honest. In my day job, I work at Modern Builder Supply, Construction Wholesale. I work with contractors, day in and day out, that I connect with homeowners right here in the city of Erie to try and do whatever they can to fix the problems on their property at the best cost possible. When you guys see those trucks that are delivering rooftop, that's me. That's my day job. Something needs to be done, but what is happening right now isn't the case. It's not working. We have people who absolutely want to learn a trade. We have so many kids out there that I work with all the time that say, "Hey, what can we do? Where can we go?" We send them to one organization, to a different organization, and everybody's full or they don't get back to them. And then they get back to the streets. And we can't have that. You know, I have, there's so many amazing people in this town who love to teach, who care, deeply care about our community, that would love to teach these kids things. And we have these blighted properties. Why can't we combine all of these? I have the utmost respect for code enforcement. I have the utmost respect for our citizens in this community. It's a win-win situation if we can combine our goals of our community, turning it around, with our goals of our community not being addicted all the time, having an outlook past high school. Let's get the word out about our programs. I know that, you know, our West Bay Front, doing amazing things, you know, they have the grants. Redevelopment Authority, they have the grants as well. No one knows about them. I talk to homeowners all the time in these targeted areas, they have no idea about them. So let's figure out a way to streamline the process and get the word out. I thank you so much for your time.
My name is Michael John Joseph Scrippsack. I'm almost 87. In my left pocket, I have 11 screws. In my right pocket, I have 14 cents, a dime and four pennies, and a medal from Poland of John Paul II. I've heard the word stupid. And if you look up stupid in a dictionary, if you want to spend the time to do that, it has the most adjectives describing stupid. And when we call people stupid, make sure you know what you're talking about. I am probably the most powerful guy you will ever see here at City Council. If you knew who I was, or am, you'd want my autograph. Now, I'm going to tell you about an individual here in Erie, Pennsylvania. I won't mention him by name, but he has several employees here tonight. He is probably one of the finest businessmen besides me that you will ever see. A businessman today is the President of the United States. And I'll tell you a little bit about him. I worked for Donald Trump in Doral. Before he even named, said he was going to run for president, he throws the biggest party for his volunteers, the biggest. Nicholas Arnold Palmer. His helicopter came down, over 400 or 500 people were at this. It's 150 miles from our home in Florida. And he shook everyone's hand. And if you haven't read The Art of the Deal, you must get that book and never give up. Another one you want to read is The 48 Laws of Power. You will never, ever, power is money. And I have a lot of it. And so does Erie Insurance employee that's doing marvelous good here because he's the best businessman you will ever see. Now, I'll tell you a little about myself. I'm a Korean War veteran. I flew off aircraft carriers both day and night. Try that sometime, especially at night. Now, when I left the Navy, I was a nobody. But because of the Korean War, I became an electrical engineer, graduate electrical engineer. And from that position, I got bigger. And then I got real big when I moved to St. Louis. I won't tell you about that. But I will tell you about this. There is no code enforcement in Erie, Pennsylvania. None. Absolutely none. Don't talk about details. You want to see, I live at 702 East 22nd Street. You want to see what I've done since I got back from Florida? On June 1st, I started making 22nd and Reed the home of Clara and Zabava. You come over there and see what I've done for less than $1,000. Because in my left pocket, I have 11 screws. You will not believe what less than $1,000 can do. And a couple of employees here that I know real well, I won't point them out, because I won't point out the big gun at Erie Insurance. I'll tell one more thing. I was here about five, 10 years ago. The Veterans Stadium should be torn down. It's a prison. There are no legal steps in the Veterans Stadium. Not one. It should be closed down.
Mr. Speaker, thank you. Thank you for your service and welcome home. I'll give you a call.
Hi, my name is Ruth Ann Barker and I live at 181 Hall Drive in Summit Township. First of all, I want to thank all of you for your patience in indulging us to hear what we have to say. And I am in complete agreement with a number of the people who have already spoke in support of a community benefit agreement. It's one feature that can be used and make everyone in the community benefit, even if they're just heard and have input on what's happening in their community. There are many things that we discussed that could be included in community benefit agreements that would not have been thought of had we not had a lot of wonderful people in the room when we were speaking. Don't miss the opportunity to listen to them. I know you all have had open doors and I appreciate that, but I ask you to remember to keep them open for everyone. And one thing, when you're thinking about those community benefit agreements, that I would suggest is that you outreach to your building trades and consider talking about also including in that benefit agreement, a qualified contractor language. That will assure that the dollars spent are spent wisely and only needed to be spent one time. I thank you for your time and have a nice day.
Are there any other citizens to be heard? Only once. Are there any citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Thank you. Rose?
Okay. Ordinances for final passage. Council File Number 15999, official ordinance number 232017, an ordinance authorizing an increase in the non-electoral debt of the city of Erie. An Ordinance Authorizing an Increase in the Non-Electoral Debt of the City of Erie, Erie County, Pennsylvania, by authorizing and improving the issuance and sale of five million two hundred and thirty-five thousand general obligation notes, federal taxable Series A of twenty seventeen, and five million two hundred and five thousand general obligation notes, Series B of twenty seventeen, for purposes recited herein, and directing the city clerk to prepare, certify, and file the required debt statement, and to take all other necessary action.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Rose. Just, would you mind explaining, Mr. President, for the sake of the people who said they didn't know what this was about? What were you doing with this money?
Would you like to explain? Go ahead.
I just, it's refinancing debt, so that we're actually paying less interest than what we're paying currently. It's almost like when you have your house, and you can get a lower interest rate, you take it so that you're paying less. It's your tax money being saved by refinancing this. That's why we're doing this, and I just wanted people to be aware of that.
Thank you, Mr. Murzky.
All right. Sponsored by Mrs. Arrington, seconded by Mr. Jones, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number Fifteen Nine Ninety-nine, now known as Official File Ordinance Number Twenty-three Twenty-seventeen, be finally passed by the City Council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Potowski. City Council passed Official File Ordinance Number Twenty-three Twenty-seventeen, finally by a seven, nay zero. Council File Fifteen Six Hundred, Official Ordinance Number Twenty-four Twenty-seventeen, An Ordinance Amending Official Ordinance Number Eighty-two Thousand and Five, known as the Zoding Ordinance of the City of Erie, by changing the classification of the property located East Fourth to East Fifth Street, in the middle of the two-hundred block east to Parade Street, East Fifth Street to East Sixth Street, from the middle of the two-hundred block east to German Street, where it will abut existing residential limited business and commercial zones, and the south side of East Sixth Street, from German Street east to the commercial zone of Parade Street. This would include only the properties facing East Sixth Street, currently classified R2 medium-density residential, to that of RLB residential limited business. By Mr. Brennan, seconded by Mr. Winarsky, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number Fifteen Six Hundred, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number Twenty-four Twenty-seventeen, be finally passed by the City Council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Potowski. City Council passed Official File Ordinance Number Twenty-four Twenty-seventeen, finally by a seven, nay zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council File Number Fifteen Six Oh One, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of forty-three thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof, the twenty-sixteen Justice Assistant Grant. Sponsored by Mr. Winarsky and seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, that Council File Ordinance Number Fifteen Six Oh One, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Potowski. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number Fifteen Six Oh One, by a seven, nay zero, on first reading.
Are these the...
That'll take us into new business, Mr. President.
Mr. President? Yes. Hope to move the balance of the agenda. Second, are there any separations? One more time, any separations? I hear none. Rose, go ahead.
All right. Moving the balance of the agenda, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Potowski. That'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Okay. Today, we'll start with Mrs. Arrington.
How did you know, Cass?
Were you ready to argue?
Yes, I'm ready. First off, I want everybody to take a look around. When we started, we had a room full of people. And it's sad, because the only time we can get everybody to show up is when something is already in motion. Every city council meeting, these chairs should be filled with all the issues that everybody is talking about. Because I'm sure I speak for everybody on city council, we feel the same way that you feel. But see, we wouldn't know that, because I can count on my hands how many of you are here every time we have a city council meeting. So in order for us to really know that you're sincere about what you're talking about, fill these seats, and keep coming back to us, telling us about your concerns, because we have the same concerns that you have, because we live in this city too. And I definitely, ninety-nine percent of what people said is correct. Especially the part about not getting the messages out to the community about the programs that we offer. We need to do an awareness campaign, because there's a lot going on in our community, there's a lot of resources we have down here at the city, but everybody's missing it. And one thing that I know for sure is, everybody don't watch TV, everybody don't listen to the radio, everybody don't have computers. So we need to find out another way to get the message out, even if that's somebody from the city going knocking on doors to tell people about these programs. And when we talk about blight, we just got a three million dollar grant through the Reed Development Authority, nobody really knows about it. But I guarantee you, we working on to change that, because everybody in the city of Erie should know about that. Because I agree, there are a lot of people, especially seniors out there, who don't have the income to fix their houses, and that's what that money is for. But don't wait until something is already finna get finalized before you decide you want to come fill the house here. Fill it every meeting, every meeting, because you know what? This is not one-day concerns, these are everyday concerns, everyday issues. And it took us a long time to get to where we are, and it's going to take a heck of a lot longer for time to get us to where we need to be. So, be in a city council meeting, I would love to see these seats full. And I'm sure, for our next mayor that's coming in, a lot of your concerns, they will be addressed. They will be addressed. So patience is a virtue. So please, definitely, look a lot, look around, because we started with a full house. And I even said to Mr. Jones, I wonder how many of them going to stay to listen to us? We sat here all this time and listened to everybody else, but nobody takes the time to listen to us. And I think that's wrong. That's wrong. Because we have the same concerns about you, the same concerns you do. We raised our family, our children, we live here in the city too. So whatever affects all of you, it affects all of us. God bless.
Thank you, Mrs. Arrington. Mr. Jones?
Heard the ball that one. Thank you, Mr. President. I very seldom don't know what to say. This is one of those times where I looked over to Mr. Winarsky, I said, she is in full mama mode right now. I echo a lot of what Mrs. Arrington said, and in relation to committee report, I don't have any direct committee report to share. I would just like to remind, excuse me, all of the citizens again that were here, and those that are still here, first of all, thank you for those that are view that stayed. The issue and part of the challenge is, for me and my experience, is that people don't really, the majority of people don't get engaged until they feel the fire of the circumstance personally, right? So we've had blight issues, we've had, in my opinion, a code enforcement system that is reactive or responsive, as opposed to proactive and go-get-it. We've been complaining, and, or not want to say complaining, but commenting on that for several years. But when it was inactive, or was response-driven, it was cool. So now there's a proaction that's happening, and people are actually, here's the thing, if they're making up issues about your property, I could see a lot of complaints. But if these are legitimate issues that need to be dealt with, and whether it be significant safety, or cosmetic, or some combination, then I don't think, I think the argument has to be something different. Not, I was cited, but maybe could it be done differently? Are there programs to help me deal with fixing what I cannot afford to fix, or helping me to adjust what needs to be adjusted? So I think sometimes we have these cathartic experiences, like the room being full, and everybody's fired up, because it's now finally on the agenda. But these things have been happening for some time. And so the engaged electorate is really what we have to look for. I don't want to be preachy about it, or like give some, you know, poli-sai speech, or whatever. But really, a lot of the things that we're dealing with, once it gets on the agenda, there's been a long process of citizens to be heard about it, public hearings, you know, someone mentioned that, well, the Boogie Plan should have been vetted, and the community should have had, I was at several community meetings throughout the process and the development of the quote-unquote Boogie Plan, it's almost like Obamacare, it's not even the Boogie Plan. It's, you know, this, this refocus Erie strategy. There were hundreds of people in East High School cafeteria, auditorium, other school buildings around the city, that were engaged in the part, in the process. And so I think it's important to really look at the fact that this council, this body, the administration, we have to look at things in a broader, long-term perspective. We don't have the luxury of being issue-focused only, based on one item on the agenda. And I think that we do, I know we do, the best we can to do that. Now, with that said, some of the concerns that were brought up were absolutely legitimate. This is not a commentary that you guys are wrong, and you're stupid, as the gentleman said earlier. I would never say that. I agree with, as Mrs. Arrington said, there's certain things that could have been done differently, and I think moving forward, hearing your concerns, will be done differently. But I think, again, the best way to deal with it is to, as much as possible, be involved in the process earlier. I mean, this whole concept the young man mentioned about solar roadways, and I agree we need a city planner. I mean, there's a legitimate truth in your statements, but again, to be able to say it and stay focused on that is a luxury that some of you have as citizens, that we don't have as a body, and we have more information sometimes than you do. And to be honest, sometimes we don't have all the information, and we're doing the best we can with what we have as well. So again, I don't want to overtalk it, I maybe already have. But I think that, you know, the engagement is important. One thing about the Viaduct, and for me, this is such a difficult conversation, because one group, or certain people are still talking about it being open for cars, or some people are just biking, pedestrian, then there's a concern about the Bayfront Connector passageways, intersections not being safe. But I've walked it too. I've walked it as a kid, before there was a Bayfront Connector. I walked the bridge, the Viaduct, myself, as a child, trying to get to heels from my grandparents, all that stuff, right? And so I've been there, done that, but I've also done it as an elected official, and it's just as dangerous outside the Viaduct, on Twelfth and East Avenue there, as it is on the, you can't, it's hard to cross that street, because the cars are turning, cars are coming from opposite ways, it's just as bad a block over. So it's not just the Viaduct that's going to provide a safe passage, there are some infrastructural things that need to be done, whether we have the Viaduct there or not, to make a safer passage for students as well. So I think there's a lot of things that need to be done, I think there's some things that we're doing, and we can be more transparent and more open. Finally, you know, Erie Insurance has been buying, I think they do great work, and I think that it's great that a hometown organization has, business has stayed, and when everybody else's headquarters are going all over the world, they're staying and they're here. But you got to remember, this is not like new, Erie Insurance has been buying these properties for years. There's been a decade of purchase, and planning, and strategy that's been going on, for better or for worse. This is not something new and just happened. So again, being involved, being connected, and getting as much information as possible will, I think, remedy a lot of these challenges and issues that we find ourselves dealing with. And the last, last thing I want to say is, I mentioned earlier in the, before meditation, Mr. Rick Shanker, who passed away in our community, do want to honor him and his family. I was a person, I was a part of his Minority Roundtable Group, when I was like twenty-five years old, and kind of got me my whistle wet for politics, so I thank him for that. But also want to honor the legacy of Dr. Garvey, that also passed in our community as well. Life is all about balance, and we all have our issues and challenges and struggles, but he definitely was someone that added to the culture and the experience and the educational experiences of our community as well. So I wanted to honor him and remember him as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Winarsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening once again. Just want to thank everyone, really, that came out tonight. It does mean something to us on council that people want to be engaged, people are concerned on what is going on in this city. Definitely, definitely, definitely numerous issues tonight, from a, I got notes galore, I don't know where to begin, but it was definitely obvious that we do have some very concerned citizens that are, want to be part of the solution, and want to bring it to our attention to see what we can do. I mean, I know, put it this way, I've had more phone calls in my, the last eight months on council than I did in my first seven years. So people are starting to get involved, maybe I'm even getting involved a little bit more myself, but I do appreciate the input the citizens are bringing forth to us. The biggest issue, I believe, with this code enforcement, people weren't informed. And actually, council wasn't informed that, how this was going to progress. And now we are, now, after the fact, we see what's going on, and, you know, if there's ever been a year we've had study sessions, and more study sessions, and more study sessions, which, once again, are all open to the public, this would probably be a definite one we should have, just to see how we can put something together, some type of plan, that makes it more citizen-friendly, neighborhood-friendly, City of Erie-friendly. I know there's areas and homes up in my neighborhood, which isn't on the East Bay Front or the West Bay Front, that definitely need some attention, and have needed some attention for many of years. But to just start picking out or select few, I think we got to do it more. If we're going to do this, we may have to do it citywide. Even though the Boogie Plan may say different, everything doesn't, that isn't gospel, okay? But that would be where the study session comes in, and we talk about this and try to determine what's the best thing for the city as a whole. Someone else mentioned how people don't get to interact with zoning changes that are being done in the city of Erie, when somebody comes and wants a zoning change. Well, by law, they have to come before council, and it's a public hearing, it's a, it's one that's published, comes, so, and it's at a council meeting, whether it be the morning meeting, evening meeting, it is published, open to the public, once again, get to go to the mic, whether you're for the change, against the change. So there is that transparency out there. So to say there is no voice in it, there really is, and I just wanted to mention that. Five hundred million dollars of new, over five hundred million dollars of new development going on once again, just want to keep alliterating that, that that's what helps grow this town. Whether, who it is, where it is, what part of the town it is, creates jobs, creates revenues, creates growth for our city. So it's something we have to accept and open with open arms, because it really is good for everybody on the whole. Other than that, once again, thank you all for coming tonight, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Winarsky. Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Minister Arrington and... I want to thank Minister Arrington and Pastor Jones and Father Wernarski for covering up many of the areas, and I'm not going to repeat it, but I share their feelings. What I do want to let the public know, that the Summer Basketball League, Spoon's Summer Basketball League, hosted at 19th, East 19th between French and Holland. We had 306 young men from the age of nine to 14, different age groups. We had no issues, and what some people say in the heart of the hood, well, I tell you, those young men, their parents, spectators, we hosted maybe about 200 spectators a night. We had no issues, none. And we have to thank Erie Police Department who provided, to oversee that nothing happened. We did get a Facebook threat, "Well, we're going to have some gun action up at Spoon's." Well, I don't do the Facebook, but the police monitor that and they came and they told me. And they say, "Well, you do what you want to do, Mel." I said, "There's only one thing to do. We stop all the games, we clear the courts, we send them home." And that's what I did. That was, that's what I did. That's the best thing to do. And if that would have happened every night, I would have cleared the court every night because that's serious. As a result, we expanded the program and we're done with 19th Street. Now, we down on Bayfront, Bayview Park, and we have kids down there, nine, 10, 11, 12, and 13 to 15. And so far, we have probably 80 starting up down there. This is their first year and they're very excited about it. Parents are coming out and we're going to have a cleanup party down there. We got, we're going to get some more trash cans down there. And I have to say thank you to the administration who supported and private businesses who also support what we're doing. And I'm just happy as could be and thank Mr. Wernarski for coming by. Mr. Jones came by. A little story of Mr. Jones, his, one of his brothers was a coach and I almost had to throw him out because he doing a lot of hauling and he wasn't even the head coach. But all of his brothers and siblings played in the league for years. That gentleman right there, Mr. Moverhill, that's my direct connection to make things happen. We need garbage cans, he's there. We need a roof fix on the shed, he's there. So, we're doing what we can in the league to keep the young men busy. We are dealing with the kids. The problems we have with the 22- and 35-year-old, we aren't dealing with them. We can't change them. We dealing with the new generation and try to get them to do what they supposed to do and become good citizens. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Whittlespoon. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. It was good to hear some of the stories that people have had and hopefully we could help out with a lot of the situations that are out there and try to find some resources and also give some other opportunities for grants and so forth. I understand why citizens are confused regarding the code enforcement sweeps. Obviously, they haven't been informed, so that needs, that needs to happen. As it lays on to code enforcement, I have not been informed until recently about the code sweeps. I've asked for further information so I could help communicate some of those details to everyone. What I have been told is that the Lower West Side inspections were completed three months ago and that the inspections on the Lower East Side continue. I've also been told that the code enforcement is gathering information on these code issues for the grant application purposes. So, there's several reasons for this. Data is being collected and how many houses need to be demolished, how many need to be rehabilitated, so the data is being used. Lastly, I've been told that writ notices of violations are being given, not citations. I have met with neighborhood representatives, talked to business owners, talked to code, the code enforcement inspector and also the manager, and reviewed the criticism on social media. Again, communication is really the biggest issue. Notice of the public sweeps and other implementation of the comp plan needs to be communicated to the public and could easily take the form of a press release, as I've seen in other cities, posting on the City of Erie website or preferably meeting with the neighborhood, neighborhood associations with a meeting or a public informational meeting. I think, I know Erie Refocus, there has been a mini website discussed before so that these issues could get out there. That would, that would help in one way. It still does not exist, but hopefully that'll happen soon. Again, that website could give these notices, it can give the public tools and resources, list the neighborhood watches and listener information, and also provide grant information. As far as Erie Refocus, we did have an action team quarterly update a couple of weeks ago. Updates were given on grants received this year and what specifically the grants are paying for. Seven million total in grants was received. Grants included primary engineering for the Bayfront Parkway, blight reduction, facade grants, infrastructure improvements in housing rehab, and lead abatement. Fifteen buildings have been demolished this year. Updates were also given and there was some discussion on other comprehensive plan initiatives, including the land bank. It was noted that it's moving forward to attain certification and funding. Quality of life ticketing system was also discussed, is still in the process, and lead abatement, lead abatement grant received by the Erie Development Authority was also discussed. And again, these issues, a lot of these need to be communicated further, and I definitely need to push these forward to let everybody know what's going on and how they could use them for their own home or who knows what they could use them for in the future, but we need to have the communication occur. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Mr. Murzky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things. I also would like to thank everyone for coming and participating. I'd also like to thank Mr. Brennan. He has been our liaison since I appointed him as president. And to Mrs. Arrington's point, you know, Mr. Brennan gives monthly reports on the comprehensive plan. It's just everybody leaves and nobody pays attention. And you do your job and I want to thank you for that, and I want to thank you for your service on that task force with the comprehensive plan and Erie Refocus. As I look at the comprehensive plan, there was some misinformation, and I think that's one of the dangers sometimes of social media is misinformation gets put out and then people take it as the gospel, and it's not true. Nobody was fined. Not one person has been fined. What's been issued are orders to correct, and if you talk to, if you call the number on there, he'll work with you. Mr. Snipper will work with you. When we went to the study session, that's one of the things that they said, no fines have been issued, and if you call and you don't have the resources, they'll work with you. Additionally, our West Bayfront and Bayfront East Side Task Force have resources available, and Mrs. Anna Franz and Jeremy Blazer both made it clear that they would work with the neighbors in those neighborhoods. So, we have to do a better job, our West Bayfront has to do a better job and Bayfront East Side Task Force of getting that information out. I was one of the first to push for a, the website. It was my recommendation to them and to almost do it like we do with, when there's a zoning change or when we're changing in the neighborhood, put out signs in those neighborhoods on the telephone poles, get the word out so that people know what's going on. I think that's important. When we look at the comprehensive plan, though, the first thing it does say, you know, on page 84, is phased implementation of code enforcement sweeps in transitional neighborhoods, which we haven't done, and the West Bayfront investment area. The West Bayfront is where we started and we have limited resources. So, we have to use our resources wisely, as Charles Boogie says right in the plan, use your resources wisely. And when we look at the decision-making guide, he asks us, when we make decisions, do things that will likely result in an increased property value, what will close the gap between property values in the city and the county, what will promote healthy levels of reinvestment in, by residential property owners, things that are likely to result in the growing value of downtown real estate, and that do not likely, or result in, that do result in a high level of public reinvestment in strengthening and maintaining our city. And so, when we look at the decisions that have been made so far, they do these things. They do what he's saying. It's a decision-making guide. Now, there's going to be bumps in the road because change is hard. It's like me, I'm a little overweight right now. I got to get back in the gym. Nobody likes to be told they have to diet and exercise, and that's what we're doing. We're getting fit. We're getting our city healthy. And in order to do that, it's going to struggle, we're going to struggle at times, but it doesn't mean we quit and it doesn't mean that you change course or, you know, you've got to keep going. We have to do a better job of communicating to the citizens, first off, one, what we're doing, and two, resources available to assist them. The other thing that I do agree with is that Mr. Snipper's doing a phenomenal job, but what's going on with the rest of the department? And so, we need, there shouldn't be such a disconnect between what one person is accomplishing and the rest of the department. And so, we need to address that issue with the administration because as we look at the whole code enforcement operation, is it running at 100% efficiency? And that's a question that I have. The other thing too is it's nice that everybody comes here and voices their opinion, but also, we do have a task force and we had a study session just a few weeks ago on this very issue and no, very few people showed up. It was publicized. And also, to Mr. Wernarski's point, with the zoning hearing change and with Erie Insurance and what they're doing, we had a zoning hearing board meeting. There was a public hearing. We had a first reading where people could comment, and then now we had the second reading. So, there were four opportunities for public input at different times, both morning and evening. And when we had the public hearing, very few people spoke against it. I don't think anybody did, quite frankly, if I remember correctly. There might have been one person that spoke against it. Everybody spoke in favor of it. And so, with the exception of, there were some issues about community benefit agreements, which I happen to agree with completely. The problem right now is we don't have the, a mechanism in place to do that, and that's something that we need to work on as a city, how to implement community benefit agreements. And I talked to Mr. Horton about that, and I said, "It's not that we don't want to do them, it's that we need to do our background and our due diligence and make sure that we understand what we're doing. You don't just jump in to the pool on the deep end. You got to make sure you know how to swim first." And so, we want to do that. We will talk with the chief about the decriminalization of marijuana. That's something that needs to be discussed internally and how it affects our police operations, not just, you know, I know other communities have done it, but we want to talk to our police officers first and make sure that, and our district attorney, and make sure that, you know, because we can decriminalize it, but there's also state laws and federal laws that they can charge people with. And so, it's, it's one of those things where it needs to be studied. And I want to, again, thank Erie Insurance for their investment in the community. And somebody asked a question, and they said, "Why can't we do this? We can do it, but I don't think necessarily everything is city council's job to step up and do. You know, why can't we get the youth of this community to fix up homes? That's a great opportunity for our nonprofits and our churches and our public organizations to step up and lead in your communities where you're based. Imagine if every church got their youth together and fixed up just the block around their place of worship. What an impact that would be. And every social center did the same thing. What an impact that would be. Not everything has to be government-led. There's a power in the people that you have, that we have, because I'm community too, and sometimes we don't use that and we rely on government, and that's not always a good thing. I think sometimes grassroots is just as powerful as, as when we issue an ordinance or, you know, go after strengthening codes and that type of thing. And so, with that, I just want to remind everybody that school starts August 28th. Please use caution driving and look out for school zones, and also be more cognizant in the City of the bus stops because we are running two routes now, so there will be more kids out at different times. Elementary runs a different shift, and this year, we're busing high school students for the first time en masse. And so, the high school students will also be bused this year if they live more than two miles away from their school. So, please be aware of the school zones and look out for the kids. They start August 28th. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Murzky. Try to keep mine as brief as possible because I'm standing between you and your families. And I'd like to say that there was a lot of great comments by my colleagues here. There's a lot of questions here tonight that I'm frustrated with also, and I think, I would hope that what we heard today, I'm going to be asking some questions about certain properties that we've been made aware of. I have personally toured the Lower West Side with members of that community, and I have done the East Side, and there are questions to be asked, why certain properties aren't being addressed equally as other properties? That's a question I'm going to put in writing, and I will expect an answer. We also need better dialogue, as has been pointed out by Mr. Brennan. I don't know why council always has to hear at the last minute from its citizens and from the Fifth Floor of what's going on. We are part-time legislators. We don't reside down here at City Hall. And it's important that the administration and the various departments cooperate and dialogue with our liaisons. That's all we have liaisons. They're not here just to have a nice title. They all work hard, that's extra. That's beyond what we do here at the meeting, and we're not getting that information. That's apparent. Mr. Brennan should have had that information. We don't know how serious this code sweep was going to be. And my question is also, as Mr. Murzky brought up and others, if one man can do 1,100 and we have six people in that department, what are the other five doing? And I keep hearing, "Well, it's proactive." Well, you know what? I call too, and I'm very proactive, and I'm still waiting for certain things to be taken care of that haven't. And that's a question I want an answer from too, because if we're proactive, then even in my neighborhood, there are problems that haven't been taken care of. So, our people, we gave you laptops, we gave you everything you needed, now it's time you do what Mr. Snipper did. He's kind of like the guy in Peace Work that everybody wants to pull up in the side room and tell them, "Slow down because you're making us look bad." But that's, that's the reality of the situation, and I think it's embarrassing that one man does that and the other five don't. So, I think we need to address that issue. Otherwise, come budget time, maybe, maybe we need to make some changes in the budget. Maybe we don't need six people. Maybe we need two Aaron Snippers. I don't know. And also, I'm encouraged by the people that came out today, as Mrs. Arrington said, but I'm a little disappointed they didn't stick around. I noticed the social media people that have been hammering us various times during the year with pictures and all that. Why haven't you contacted us personally? I personally am not a social media person. I don't have time to sit by my computer, otherwise I can't do my job, which is meeting people, answering phone calls. I don't sit by my computer. So, I would encourage you to tell your friends and neighbors to either call us, write a letter, call the, call the office down here, and especially, call the mayor's office and the administration. Let them hear it. Let them hear it as much as we are. We all got to work together. This is a huge problem. And talking about zoning hearings, I saw people shaking their heads out there. There were zoning hearing meetings. There are meetings that are advertised. All of us know about them. They're on our city website, they're in the city newspaper, various times they're advertised on TV. Pardon?
Planning Commission?
Yes, Planning Commission and zone, everybody. All these committees that meet, the various organizations, they're public. And people, I was here in the early morning when neighbors were upset about different problems and they showed up. They got their voices heard. So, we do do it. Don't say we don't, because I'll gladly, you can call down here and we'll give you the meeting dates. And I do hope that, you know, as we move forward to whoever the new mayor is, whoever the new council is, I hope we do work as a group because we got some serious issues. like that one gentleman talked about 11th Street. It's easy to throw rocks at 11th Street, but at the time, you got to remember that Erie had a huge industrial core, and they needed places to put all the workers. That was, the unfortunate sidebar was that those parking lots are now empty because all the factories gone. Which brings us to the comp plan. Everybody reads the comp plan much like they read the Bible or the Constitution. They take those lines out which benefit them, but they don't read the whole report at face value. And we're going to be making some tough decisions, as Mr. Jones said. We don't have the ability to sit back and react after the fact, be Monday morning quarterbacks. We have to work with what's going on. And you know what? Part of the plan was 650 million over 10 years, which brings me to 65 million a year, and when you think about that, that's why I'm going to praise Erie Insurance today because that's part of the deal. Part of the deal is private investment. And when we have VelocityNet, and we have Erie Insurance, and we have Hammitt, and all them doing this, this is a no-brainer. I mean, they're going to provide jobs and taxes. I don't know why anybody would be against it. So part of the deal with the comp plan is private investment. And we cannot sit back and wait for the golden opportunities to come, we got to take advantage when they're there. And finally, I agree with the volunteer help. And there are many churches and groups out there that are willing to help. And I think going forward into the future, I think we need to find a way to bring those church groups, the builders that are out there that want to get involved, we need to get some innovative programs and find a way to help people that need help, but also build some new housing and make it once again proud to reside in the City of Erie. So please bear with us, but please, call us, write us, don't just stay on social media. Call us and bring it up to us in person or by phone. Thank you. Administration?
Tomorrow, we start celebrating Erie, one extra day of music and expanded kids' zone, and it's going to be four days of activities ending up with fireworks on Sunday night, so please come down.
Thank you.
Would you like a report?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Chief Justice.
How about if I reserve my report the next, next meeting? Okay, Mr. President?
Motion adjourned. Okay?
City Council adjourns at 10:08 PM. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Whittlespoon.